Right, let me start our recording. Good evening and welcome to the Dover Select Board meeting for April 5th. We are now open for public comment. Is there anybody on?
You have a public comment?
I have a public comment first.
Hold on one second.
Yes?
Yes?
Speak, speak, speak.
Raise your hand if you can hear us if you're on. To me.
You're good?
Thank you, thank you, okay. Jeanette?
Okay, I just wanted to Travis wanted me to pass on to you all that the town hall ramp project should begin in the next couple of weeks. So, after the figures in the making. But they will always sort of obviously the front entrance will be affected, but they are going to maintain both side entrances will still be usable while they're working on the front.
That's very good news.
And then the other thing was I had sent out that email from Witten Solid Waste that Vicki had received.
Yes, and I will have a response letter for you by the next meeting. For the board to vote on and then we can. But I will, I will work on it.
Okay.
Eric, do you have a public comment? Oh, you're muted, I think.
Not so much a public comment, but can Linda mute because we can't hear anything?
Oh, Linda, your, your, your background noise is coming through. Linda, can you mute? Okay, thank you. All right, better? Okay. All right, are there any other public comment? Okay, so new business, reappointments to the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District. Resolution to appoint a representative to the governing board of the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District. It resolve that the Select Board of the Town of Dover here boy points the following representatives and one or more alternate representative and one or more alternates to the governing board of the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District, DB Fiber, for terms of one year each. Representative TJ Sebelia, alternate Shannon Wheeler and Diane McCormick. Do we know if they've all agreed to be reappointed?
Yes, they have.
Okay. So make a motion that we instruct the chairperson to sign the reappoint, the reappointment letter. No one was asking for a motion. So Joe moved and Dan seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, no, look, do we really want to sign that?
Select Board must appoint them no later than April 25th, so we can hold on to it till our next meeting and Vicki can sign it then. Okay? Okay, that's just, all right, and then we have a letter from the Chair of the Development Review Board asking that the following individuals be appointed, reappointed to their terms. Jerry Gillette and Steve Montello would be reappointed to permanent positions on the board, which would expire on March 31st, 2025. And Sarah Hyde and Jack Conway as alternate board members with terms expiring March 31st, 2023. So I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the DRV Chair. Second, all in favor? All right, and now we have the economic development. Try to keep things organized. Consider funding for a self-guided historical and recreational driving tour.
I don't see Mr. De Sadi.
No, but you see Ms. Newman and Ms. Cole.
Hello, Ms. Newman and Ms. Cole.
Hello.
We actually can't see them.
Well, you see.
Well, we can kind of. You can see them from their chins down.
While we move to B, and then we'll go back.
Okay, that's fine.
This is sign purchase.
Okay, consider sign purchases for the crosstown parking lot and town forest. Did everybody see?
That's good right there. Perfect.
Hopefully not, hopefully it'll hold itself up. All right, so have, have you guys?
Yeah.
Or do we have any comments or changes or are we?
A comment?
Well, let me ask the board first.
Sure, sure.
Do you have anything?
Wait for Eric.
Okay, Eric?
So just to preempt this, two things. One was on Saturday, I received texts from two different people letting me know that there was a full-size RV set up in the parking lot, hanging out. So definitely want to get some signs up there sooner rather than later. I figured as the ski season dwindled down, I wouldn't have to worry about it as much. We might have a minute, but they were definitely up there this weekend. And there was some trash up there as well. The other thing is, is I wanted to point out that with these signs, we couldn't find signs that specifically stated hours of, you know, no camping. So we'd have to order those custom anyway. What I wanted to point out is that if we start with these signs and they don't seem to be doing what we want them to do, we can reach out to Taylor or someone else who does custom signs, have them add hours that can just be added underneath these signs in the same color. And then we can go further down that rabbit hole of policing and all of that stuff. My proposal to you guys is for the hundred and, what was a hundred and ten dollars?
And forty cents.
And forty cents. I'll kick in the forty cents. I'd like to hang these signs up and see if this takes care of the problem without having to have the much larger discussion about policing of said signs.
Okay, board? Any comment? No, that's fine.
I like that.
All right, so I will accept a motion to approve purchase and installation of the no overnight camping and no fire signs for the town forest and crosstown parking lot. I need a motion. Okay, Joe moved, got second. All in favor?
Aye.
So those come with, those come with two, free two-day shipping. I will get them, I will touch base with Travis and get some signs up there and just have them hang them ASAP. Thank you, guys.
Anything for the story walk?
Let's, Jim's there now, do you want to circle back around to A?
Uh, yeah, Sue had just stepped out for a second, so, but she's back, so.
Oh, okay.
She's back, okay, so. Oh, okay, okay. All right, so why don't? I'm gonna ask the three of you to bring chairs up a little closer so it can be picked up on the microphone. And then tell us about your proposal.
Well, I had come, I think it was last year, to talk to the Select Board about supporting this self-guided historical and recreational driving tour, which includes kiosks that people would go and visit. And we would develop a map that would take people from one place to another. And it would include, at the very least, it's going to include Dover and Wilmington. It looks like Reeseboro is going to get back into this now, which they had voted to get into it originally, but then with COVID-19 and the fact that because of COVID-19, I guess you could say we all dragged their feet. And so they decided to reclaim their money and wait until this started to develop from the other towns as well. The school is doing the research for these kiosks in Dover. In Wilmington, it would be Julie Moore who's going to do the research. And down there, we've also got permission to put the, I think it's four kiosks at the Mover site. They've got kiosks there that describe the, a lot of the industrial history of the town Wilmington. So that's where we are right now. Each kiosk is going to be, we think with installation, everything about fifteen hundred bucks each. And so I guess that's where we're at. We need some money to get started. Sue?
And for Dover School, Jim knows I'm always interested in history projects that involve students. And the International Baccalaureate Program looks for involving kids in action projects. And so I asked Bridgette if she'd be interested and her fifth grade. And so they are going to be working, they have started working on research of Dover history, the economic history, the old mills, the first general stores, schools in Dover, and the political, how did, how did Dover evolve politically? So if we can put three kiosks up, they would be willing to do the background work. We're all like that. And Bridgette even mentioned you might be able to put QR codes on the, on the kiosks so that, because they're limited in how much the kids can put. So if they've done extra research or want to do something oral or more visual, you might be able to connect in that way, technologies are piece beyond mine. I think the other piece with the QR codes would be that it would be updatable or it's, it's, so that it's not static as it would be on the site. In which case kids in future years could be involved in the project.
Well, even on the kiosks, by the way, that's, that's a good point. They have a top on them on the side where I think it's like three screws can be removed. And the mylar sheet that's inside can be removed and a new one put its place either the same or different depending on, well, the sun is going to affect these things for one thing. You know, our weather is not the best for it.
I mean, I'm clearly biased, but I'm in favor of doing something like this, but if you're, I'd like to, I'd like the idea of the QR code because having something that they can continue to do that maybe, you know, if they're just gonna say, oh, I'm cool, this is my kiosk over here. Just to be clear, you're thinking four over near the Mover in Wilmington, that's nothing you're talking about for money from us, right?
No.
And then three over ones that are around here.
No, that Wilmington is, Wilmington has already supported it. And it has set an amount of money in the project. But their statement upon leaving the meeting was it'll be contingent upon what Dover does.
Joe, did you have anything?
Where did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't done?
Go ahead. No, I just wanted to know where fifteen hundred came, came from.
Um, we applied to the, to the company that makes these things. And.
I haven't seen.
They came back with a number and then I did some work to try and come up with what it would cost for graphic design and installation. And that's how we determined the, the amount of money per, per kiosk.
Which, um, which design, there's multiple designs in here, which one are you talking about?
Well, the one that we're talking about using for almost everything is that traditional T design, which is on the front.
The T design?
Yeah.
You mean this one?
Yeah, the one on the bottom. But if we end up in a situation where we got, where we, yes, where we've got more material than what something like that can handle, then we might sit down and reconsider and to do something else at, at some location. But for that, we would have to come back and do a board. But we're not, we're not planning anything like that at the present time.
Okay. Personally, I don't feel like I have enough information. The fifteen hundred dollars is a very open-ended number. I would really like to see a breakdown of the budget.
Yeah, no problem.
That gives specifics. And personally, I have a little bit of a concern about why we're putting two kiosks basically across the street from one another. Sorry, I gave you a chance to talk.
And when Jim brought that up, we reevaluated. I mean, we, so right now, our thought is one of living history. One of the very first mills was along Route 100. And question I was gonna ask Jim tonight is I, from the map I have, I can't quite pinpoint where that mill was. And maybe it is Tannery Road, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So I thought that might be a good place where kids who are doing research on economics, because the mills were important. And the very first general store is where the theater post office is now, so I thought one there.
Okay, so I think.
We had gotten some input somehow, and I can't remember how, back from this board about not being advisable for them to be across the street from one another. And at that point, which was probably three weeks ago, we, we collaborated, we.
Okay. I'm gonna make a request that's from me and the rest of the board can weigh in on what they think. But I would like to see an actual line item budget for these items. I would like to see locations. Because what you're telling me is different than what I read. So I'd like to see the actual locations and I would like to know that if they're going on private land, that you have gotten the permissions for them to go there before we, before we actually vote on a budget for this. Does anyone else have? Eric?
Hey, so a few things. Number one, we, our department is in full support of this initiative. I think, you know, obviously we'd like to see that broken-down budget as well. It was not, it was last week we spoke, Jim, and it was not a request from the Select Board. It was a recommendation from a Select Board member who had seen the information that we go ahead and spread those kiosks out a little bit. Because if they, in this original plan that I sent to you guys on Friday, if we put them right across the street from one another, you know, I'm afraid that it would cause that people to look at those two and not go find the third. So if we kind of spread them out a little bit, even if it was along the trail, I would feel a little more warm and fuzzy about it altogether. So that's just as a little clarification where that information came from.
Where the trail is, how much of the area off of the trail does the town own or have access to?
I don't think there's a standard.
No.
Number.
We don't.
We don't, we don't have like a right-of-way off the valley trail.
We don't own any.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're just on the pavement, that's it. And if you step.
Well, it's a right-of-way.
Twenty-five feet from the center line is state's property. And obviously, that's someplace we might be able to put it. But they've got a right-of-way in order to put it along with people's property.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm gonna say is why don't you research and decide which locations you would like? And assuming we're gonna stick with three kiosks. And do the research on whether you need to get permission on those sites or not. I don't know where specifically you're talking about, so I can't say, well, that's part of a right-of-way or that's part of a private easement or there's, without knowing more details. So figure out where you would like to put them and what you need to do for permissions to put them there. And if those sites don't work out, then we know that, you know, additional research has to be done to figure out where. I don't think anybody's disagreeing with the idea of the, of these at all, but there is more information that I think would be helpful. Yeah?
I just get why not at the Dover Park?
For, as an example, right, so that, so that's something to be considered.
People gather anyways and it's, it's a great idea.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yes, you're about to. Yes, I thought, oh, if we put it in there, because when the concerts are there, you know, people, and then that might leave there. Something on the walking trail somewhere, I think this is awesome. Totally should have the QR code so that it can expand and everything. I can't believe those are fifteen hundred dollars for one, but, um, yes, but yeah, this is awesome.
They're not, they're actually not fifteen hundred dollars for one. What it is, is I'm anticipating the costs of.
Everything.
You know, the graphic designer and installation, you know, we have to dig a hole.
Well, I think town would be able to.
I just wanted to ask that if it was for any reason going to be landing on a private landowner's property, that you reach out to me and we contact them together?
Okay.
Same as with trails and rec and all of that stuff. It's just, it makes more sense for those first reach-outs to come from my office.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have any questions for us?
No, no, I think, thinking about the park and along the trail and one of the living history.
Dover Story.
Dover Historical Society will.
Give me trouble.
I'm sorry. It would probably be the three appropriate places.
Okay, so cite them out more specifically.
Okay.
So we can, and, and you're, you know, you can do a kind of a rendering with the, with the, the one you've picked out at the locations that you want to have them so that we can get a, I'm, I'm not very good visualizing things. That would help us. And then the line item budget.
I have some very tiny sticks that I could, you know.
However you, however you want to do it, but something that would give us a visual representation, not just by the living, you know, not by the Dover Historical Society, but where on the property kind of thing. Okay?
Okay.
Anybody else? Eric, you all set?
I'll set, Jim, reach out to me with any questions, I'm happy to help you, okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you the budget and the mail probably before the end of the week.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And now we have for library story walk. Shannon, you wanna talk to us about this?
Oh, sure. Um, so the children's department at the library would like to install a story walk along the trail and also along the brick building. What, they don't need any funding from us. What they're looking for you tonight is just your okay so that Eric and I can work with other town staff and figure out exact locations that we could place those and who we have to get permissions from.
Are these permanent or it says for July and August, are these temporary?
Um, she will be taking them out for winter storage.
Okay, so there are, so there are summer projects, spring, summer project. Okay, so what, so specifically right now, you're just looking for us to say, go ahead and do some more research?
That you think it's a good idea and we can move forward with finding the locations that work best for everybody.
And, and access to town employees or something to help put them, put something in there? Did I hear that wrong?
I don't, yeah, Eric might.
Well, it says to work with the town staff and library to find suitable places and obtain the permissions, not the actual physical.
Right, so I think, I think what she's getting at there is to work with Shannon and I on where they would be able to go, how many we'd be able to come up with, how they could be installed so that we're not interfering with what, anything that Dave does. So that's probably, she was referring to that as well. Just my input on this. You know, I know the, the library in Wilmington does this, it's, it's very popular down there. They do it at the Retreat Farm in Bratton, my girls are huge fans of it. You can swap the stories out from these things all the time, so you can do a different story all the time. I think it's a, it's a good thing and we don't have, you know, minus our playground, we don't have a ton of youth-oriented things in town, so I think it's a, a good idea and especially because at the moment, they're not looking for any money.
Does anybody on the board have any questions? Okay, so, um, I, so I need someone to make a motion?
Move that we allow the library to move forward with its ideas to, and to create the story walk.
Started.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would just ask at some point if we could get some sort of a visual rendering of what they look like?
Yep.
I mean, they're not asking us for money, so it's not like we can say you can't use that, but I would just like to see it.
I'm sorry, I thought I sent that to you, a picture of what the kiosk.
You may have, but I don't, I'm, I'm scrambling through my emails and I'm not seeing it.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe send it again.
Cause we'll send that again and we can.
I got the description, I didn't get. Well, whether we got it or not, if you could resend it, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Shannon, can we send that? And then we'll, you know, obviously prior to implementation or installation, we'll have another chat about it, okay?
All right, next is to approve the updated incentive program documents. So this is DASP.
DASP do it and signage program. And there's no changes to any of them other than updating dates.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? All right, so could I have a motion to approve the DASP do-it and signage, commercial signage program application forms? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's, they're all, they're all set?
Thank you.
And summer concerts and open mic?
Yes, so summer concert series is booked. This year, there's eleven concerts. We are skipping the weekend that's the same day as the Blueberry Splash in Wilmington. So we'll start June 26th and run through August 28th. There's one new band this year, a lot of bands seem to have broken up, I guess, during COVID. So Kevin had a tough time finding us new acts. So those start then, and then Linda would like to restart open mic nights. And instead of having it, in the past, it was complimentary to the fall and winter concerts, but she'd actually like to restart them the spring and May. So just wanted to share that we'll probably be doing two of those a month opposite of Select Board meeting weeks.
So they would be Tuesday nights?
Um, I, no, I think she wants to do Wednesdays still, but just the opposite week.
Okay.
That you do.
And what's the expense for that?
Um, open mics have only been a hundred dollars in setup fees. And we've budgeted for a full season of everything and haven't used much of that at all. So we have more than budgeted enough for it.
Are we, say, I don't want to be like the negative whatever, but say like all of a sudden, you know, no one's really going to the open micro, it's kind of flopping. We're, we wouldn't have to carry on with that, or maybe it's once a month, or you could adjust that, or, right?
These are a lot easier to make changes to because it's, Linda is our contact person and Linda knows what she's gonna get for a crowd. So I think we can try it for May and I see her coming back in. Try it for May and, and see how it goes and see how, if she wants to extend it or cut it back, we can adjust that.
I like that, thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, Scott, there's, there's nothing in this department that we don't continually review to make sure that we're properly spending one percent money on, so you don't have to worry too much about that.
Okay. Do you guys, do you have anything to say? No questions, comments, suggestions? I'm staring at Joe because he looks like he's thinking hard. All right, so. So then I will entertain a motion to approve the open. Uh, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the open mic nights for alternate Wednesdays starting in May. So Joe makes, Joe moves.
Second.
Dan seconds. All in favor? Okay, so we will go ahead with those subject, and obviously, like Eric said, they're going to get reviewed as they're going and we'll see how things are, how things are going with them as we, as we proceed through the summer.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you. All right, I need a motion to go into Board of Liquor Control, so.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so we have applications for first and third-class licenses and outside consumption permits for handlebar hospitality LLC DBA Valley Hall Saloon, TTR LLC DBA to Tanneri Road, and TAC Associates DBA TC's Tavern. Randy, do you have any?
All set.
All set. All right, so I will entertain a single motion to approve all of these applications. And Dan moves. Second. Scott seconds. All in favor? And Janet, you have those for us to sign? We're right here, under, okay. All right, so guys, don't leave until these get signed. Uh, I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th. Oh, all right, sorry. Motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control.
Start it.
I, so moved. Joe moved, Scott seconds, all in favor? Okay, now, I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, and I need a motion to approve the warrants of March 19th for $206,255.78 and April 2nd for $113,852.25. So Dan moves, Scott seconds, all in favor? All right, FYI, we have a planning commission meeting on April 11th at 6:30. A Trails and Rec Committee meeting at, on April 12th at 6:30. Pre-town meeting is May 10th at 6:00 PM at the Dover Town Hall. And town meeting is May 17th at 10:00 AM at the Corinthia Base Lodge. Are there any, oh, Eric?
Just a quick note that on the agenda for that Trails and Recreation Meeting is a talk about the potential uses of Hathaway Trail. So if you or anyone you know is interested in being a part of that conversation, please either reach out to me or plan on attending that Trails and Recreation Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any liaison reports? Okay, um, we are, need to have an executive session for personnel. I'm sorry?
Linda is still on.
Uh, not at this point.
Okay, and she hasn't said anything.
Okay. Um, so, uh, motion to adjourn? Or, oh, motion to go into executive session, sorry, at 7:04 PM. So entering executive session at 7:04 PM.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you. Yeah, okay.